And there's a criteria from one to seven.
We're good.
I don't think we need to read them. Eleven, I'll just leave it as stated.
Can you read them in Latin?
Yeah. We recommend the planning board consider this criteria and request information from the applicant to make a determination on compliance. The code allows the planning board to require enhancement of the repairing zone. Under wetlands, the applicant should confirm any other jurisdictional agency that could have authority over the proposed action. Local wetlands permit would, from the village, would not supersede any other approval. Flood planes FEMA mapping indicates the site is located almost entirely within the special flood hazard area, and portions may be within the floodway. The applicant should confirm, and if possible, show the limits on the plan. Per the code, the development requires a floodplain development permit from the code enforcement officer. The applicant should certify utility floodproofing, describe whether water courses will be altered or relocated as a result of the development, demonstrate via calculations that there's no rise in post-development, analyze whether flood damage could occur to another property as a result of the development. ARB, the ARB is required for the project. And SEACRA, we defer to counsel in the typing of the action. The long form EAF was submitted. The applicant indicates a zoning change is requested. This appears to be a typo.
Hmm.
There's water and sewer capacity to be determined. That should be, that should be.
Yes, once we have a finalized layout, we'll certainly provide that accurately.
Okay. Limits of the surface water features and floodplain should be mapped on the applicant's plan. That's a repeat from above and certified. And potential habitat for the northern long-eared bat, the applicant should include notes on the plan limiting tree cutting times during the sensitive periods. The DEC mapper also indicates archaeological sites could be present on or adjacent to the proposed site. A shipload determination should be solicited from, by the applicant.
Yeah, we have the original no effect finding letter, so we'll resubmit that. I do have a couple of questions, though, before the board has questions for me potentially. I just, can you go to the site plan sheet, Mr. Chairman? I just, I wanted to make sure I understood comment 1B on the bulk lot area density, because I put a calculation on sheet three under the bulk table. Go one more page up. Go backwards, so, right, whoop, right. Go back one more, down one more to the next page, right up there. I do have a calculation right here. I don't know if there was, it was incorrect. I'm just looking for some.
Six thousand square feet lot area per unit, which is 1,000 square feet. And I believe you listed 10,000. That could be a typo.
No, no, well, scroll over, because I got 42, 626 divided by 6,000. That's the area of the lot. Is, required is 10,000 square feet, right?
Yes.
We're providing 42, 626.
I saw it on the required, you listed 10,000.
Over here?
Yeah.
And what's actually required?
You can go up to 42, according to the zone.
Okay. That's, thank.
Complies, that's what it is.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that that's where we were. I thank, yes. Good, okay. I wasn't sure. I just wanted to make sure that was the spot.
I guess it's a minor thing, but.
Perfect.
Throw it right under the bus when she's not here.
Like, as long as they figured that out, I was actually, I was lost, so.
It took me a minute to figure out where we were going on that one.
There is a note on sheet five that shows, that labels the 100-year flood elevation. It's at 485. I think our highest contour on the site's like 484. So, yeah, the entire site's in the flood.
It should be certified as the actual, so under your flood elevation.
Okay, and I think that was, that was pretty much it.
My turn.
My turn? I'll be really quick. So the revised application documents that you submitted, they were all unsigned, so if they've been updated, they need to be signed and resubmitted. And for the board, previously, when you saw one of the other versions of this, you had adopted an FBAF Part Two. Based on this version, I sent you a revised FBAF Part Two. The only change to that, I think, was 17C, and that became no from moderate to large. Other than that, I did not see any additional changes. They would still have to address all of those items that are marked small, moderate, or large in an expanded Part Three. And that's all I've got.
So for us right now, it's decide if we like the layout, right?
Yeah, I think the layout is the biggest thing. And maybe even if you wanted to see like a, I know you can't do it on these TVs, but maybe an overlay of the 12-unit onto the seven-unit, that may help too.
Well, is the board still considering that, wanting the 12-unit?
I don't think anybody's considering the 12. I don't think anybody's considering the 12.
No, I think, but when you look at the footprint of this, you went from 12 units and then seven units.
The units got bigger.
The units got bigger.
Oh, you wanted to see the size difference between the units themselves?
So to kind of show where there's maybe a saving of any impacts, or maybe if there's an increase of any impacts, or something like that. I didn't know if that was, like, a comparison you may want to see. Because I think you did that with one of the prior ones.
Natalie actually had done that for us, where she overlaid the two.
Okay, so in other words, if the 12-unit plan had buildings that were, and I'm making this up, 20 by 30, and these might be 30 by 35 or something, you want to see that comparison? Okay, we can do that.
If we're actually getting anything by going through.
Of course. We can, we can do that.
And you moved the dumpster out of the repairing zone, so.
I, well, that, yes. That was, that was a big problem last time.
Any other feedback or comments or concerns for the applicant?
No.
No? Anything else from the, or for the consultants? Sorry, I never ask anybody any questions on Jim's report.
No.
All right, so it's really the comparison, the sign plans, and the Part Three.
Yep.
Okay, and the board is interested in this, so we'll pursue this particular plan.
Does anybody take exceptions to this?
No, but I think this is much better.
I see head shaking, so I think we're.
That's good, that's good feedback. I appreciate that very much. I've taken up enough of everybody's time tonight. Thank you for being patient with my applications, both remaining applicants and board and consultants. Have a good night, everybody.
You too, have a good night. I'm closing my stuff like we're done, not even. And we're done. Just kidding. All right. Klein, ARB 16 Country Hollow Road. Review and discuss documents submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation and proposed 1,352 square foot addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located at 16 Country Hollow in Highland Mills, as known as the Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section 247 Block 5, Lot 8. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joel Xteen. I'm here to represent the owner, Mr. Klein. So what we are proposing here is a single-family house. So it was, this house was already approved by the board, a different layout, different design. We're changing, we're changing stuff in the, in the house. So what we're changing is the first floor, the main floor, we are removing one bed, one room. Actually, the study room goes away from the first floor, it goes down to the basement, and we adding a location for stairs to go up to a sitting area on a mezzanine. And the, also what we're changing is that the dining room, the dining room and the kitchen is getting bigger. Now, the basement, the previous plan of the basement was, we didn't, we didn't show any changes to the existing basement previously. Now we are doing changes. We're changing around the entire basement. We adding, we adding some rooms to the basement, so as I said, we adding a study room in the basement, and a mud entry. So we adding a couple things to the basement. So this is, this is what the changes are. The owner started to work before on the, on the changes before coming back to approve the changes, and they, they got a stop, stop work order to not do any work before they come back, and then they, the inspector told them they can work with the previously approved plans, and, and before they do any changes to the, to this, then we have to get approvals and make sure that everything is per the approved plans.
There's a mezzanine now, too. It's the building height changed, too, didn't it, from the original approval?
Yes, it got, it got taller.
It got taller, yeah.
Yes.
How much taller did it get?
I think it went up at about three feet, if I remember correctly.
So if the board remembers, the rendering on the left is what the board had previously approved, no rendering on the right is what?
Yeah, correct. Yes.
You approved it 25 and a half, and the current is 31.6.
So that's six and a half feet.
Six feet?
Questions for the applicant? No?
Footprint of the building's not changing, correct?
It is changing. We adding, we adding to the right side, if you go to.
That little section, yeah.
So this area here is being extended here. So we adding, we adding square footage, we adding to the dining room and to the kitchen right here. That, that part is being extended.
The deck is gone, right? There was a wraparound?
The wraparound deck is gone, yeah, this one here.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Zoning, the prior approval included findings on legally pre-existing non-conform conditions for lot width and area. These regulations and terminations should be listed on the proposed plans, but it is good in compliance. The bulk table is in compliance. ARB, the materials and colors of the proposed home are changed from prior approval. The planning board should consider these changes. The review of materials submitted indicated the stone patio is removed from the applicant's proposal. The applicant, can you confirm that?
Yes.
Okay. The material of the proposed deck should be noted on the plans.
Yes, we'll, we'll add that to the.
The applicant should confirm no additional bedrooms are proposed from the prior approval. The applicant's photos provided, photos, excuse me, of three comparison homes, 170, 187 feet to .4 miles away from the subject property. Two of the three homes were considered in the previous application. The code requires information on comparison of homes within a 300, 300 feet of the property line. The two homes considered previously are out of that range. The board should consider the information provided and determine if additional information is warranted. The building footprint of the proposed home is 3,461 square feet, where the previously approved home was 3,225 square feet. The proposed home is 17% smaller than the largest comparable home and 80% larger than the smallest comparable home. We recommend you consider this in your review. The gross square area, floor area of the proposed home is 6,787 square feet, where the previously approved home is 4,252 square feet. The proposed home is 14% larger than the largest comparable home and 52% smaller than the comparable home.
I believe that the 4,252 square feet was just the living area, and the 6,786 is altogether, the living area and the, and the unfinished area.
The ridge preservation, the materials that were provided for the application were previously considered in the approved application. During the review of that application, a home was determined not to be visible from the view corridor, although the home appears to be six, a little over six feet taller. It appears the distance from the view corridor has not, would not, it wouldn't make it not visible. Non-reflective windows are a requirement of the code, and the applicant's plans indicates no trees are to be removed as part of this proposal. A public hearing, at your, a public hearing at your discretion may be scheduled or waived. That's it.
Questions for Jim? Kelly, you have anything?
No.
Board, feedback, comments, concerns? No. Can you pull up, once again, the approved, that's the one I'm looking at? I think that's quite dissimilar than what is around. Yeah, I mean, I think the applicant, we'll send the applicant the 300-foot comparison map, so that they can.
We have one, one is, I think one is within the 300 feet, right?
Yeah, one is, but the other two are outside of the.
Okay.
So I think, though, you use, what is that? 12 Country Hollow will fall within the radius?
Yeah. Okay.
12 does.
But those, that's your 300 foot, that's your comparison.
All right. So how many do you need?
At least, I mean, I would do at least three. I mean, as many as you want, but at least three. Any other feedback from the board, concerns?
Not until I see that, no.
No, everybody wants to wait to see that?
I would.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I can tell you, this is a type-two action under SEACRA, if you'd like to do something on it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to type as a type-two under SEACRA.
One second.
Thank you.
Ooh, you got beat. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. All right, so yeah, if you can just redo the comparison, I'll make sure the building department gets this over to you in the morning.
Okay.
So you have what we're looking for.
Okay.
And then we'll go, we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience tonight. The other.
I can give him this.
Yeah, you can give it to him, but I mean, we got to send it to him anyway, I mean. Chug him right along. Okay. Hartman, ARB Brown 5 First Avenue. Review and discuss documents submitted on the ARB and Ridge Preservation application for expansion of the building footprint and proposed addition to a story, of a story, to an existing dwelling. Said property is located at 5 First Avenue, as known as the Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section 214 Block 7 Lot 3.
Hi, my name is Ishloimigal from Hartman Design. If I may ask a favor, I have a few applications here, but the last one, I have a few people here. If we, if we can switch over, do not hold.
If you're representing, oh, well, I'm okay with you.
Yes.
Okay, so you want to go to 4051 Southfield Falls?
Correct, and we have Steve here, which will do the presentation.
Okay, no problem. Everybody, we're changing gears.
I had to find where I was going.
It's a pleasure to be back here again. Kelly, good to see you. I'm only going to speak to one issue, so if there are.
He did.
Sorry.
Okay. And Mr. Stiff?
If there are other questions that deal with other matters beyond what I will discuss, they'll be able to be dealt with and answered by others. So this is Stephen Barshav, representing the applicant, and what I wanted to discuss with you is the comments that I saw in the engineer's report regarding the zero lot line and the semi-attached homes. So I went back and I looked at the subdivision plat, and what I saw was that there are zero lot lines for this part of the development, that is, the senior housing part of the development, for side lot lines. I'm not talking about front or rear. So when I saw that, I said, okay, that's the way that the subdivision was approved, and this is consistent with that. I also noted from the design that the homes that are proposed are not duplexes. These are single-family homes that just happen to have one common wall. So I live in the harbors in Haverstraw. I live in a place where there are single-family homes that are attached in a row. I live in a row house. So it's four-story, single-family home, has its own entrance, does not share anything in common with anybody else. Those are attached, single-family homes. This is semi-attached. Why semi-attached? Because it's only got a common lot line on one side. So this is a very common type of development format. It does not change it from being single-family home to multifamily, and it does not change anything about what is allowed in terms of the side yard setbacks. So I just wanted to share that information with you, because my understanding is, is that no variance would be required for that type of layout for single-family homes, so long as we're talking about in this senior housing area. So that was the issue that I wanted to address. I'm not sure if there are other things that you wanted to cover?
No.
Okay.
I mean, although your comment that it is not a duplex, we recognize that there's single-family dwellings, but the common definition of a duplex is two dwellings attached with a single wall, so, I mean, the board has to look at that as well.
Yeah, see, I had, I mean, and it may just be more informal, Kelly, in terms of usage of terminology. I had always thought of a duplex as stacked, that you have two units, one on top of the other, there's either two separate stairways or a common set of stairs, and they're stacked. That's the way I, I think of a duplex, but that could, that could just be more, because I'm city-oriented.
Because where I live, we have, there are duplexes, and it's a townhouse development, but there's some that only have, that are sideways attached, and they just share that one wall, similar to this. So we call those duplexes. So. Understood, potato, potato. It's not of any import. I think the board knows this is, in your code, considered semi-attached.
Yeah.
Single-family.
That's right. Okay.
A question, when this was first approved, were semi-attached homes approved in this?
So your code allows semi-attached in the senior housing sections. However, that was not what was studied under SEACRA. SEACRA did not talk, SEACRA was specific to single-family homes. So I think that if this is something the applicant's going to pursue, they do need to address that from an environmental standpoint, and I could insert my engineering knowledge here, but I will refrain, but I think it would at least encompass stormwater, potentially any additional impervious surface area, because it maybe extends out the other way wider, and from an aesthetic standpoint, because now people coming up the hill may see a more solid.
Yeah, as far as ARB goes.
Well, as far as ARB and as far as aesthetic impacts. So I think that those are things that you need to take a look at in terms of both SEACRA and your ARB and Ridge Preservation.
And, and there's no disagreement on our end that it would require ARB review. There's no, no doubt about that, and that will be taken up at that time. And as far as SEACRA is concerned, we can provide whatever calculations are necessary in order to show that this configuration doesn't have the potential to generate any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Yes, I would ask for like a.
For the consistency side.
A consistency study.
Yeah, okay.
Almost said a comparison study. It is getting late.
Getting there. It's not late yet.
Late for me.
Any other, does the board have questions for Mr. Barshav before? He sits down, or? Do we have questions for the applicant in general, or do, what does the board want to do?
Well, we're not discussing the ARB tonight, correct? Or are we?
You can get, I would say.
We could go, we could jump ahead of this, like.
You can give some feedback. I think the applicant wants to get feedback from the board.
In my opinion, this is going to be a very dissimilar to everything that's up in that
I think one of the things that we'll address for you, we were discussing this the other day, this goes a little beyond my expertise as a lawyer, so it cut me a tiny bit of slack. But my understanding is, is that this is very typical for senior housing developments, that this is the kind of thing that houses like.
This senior housing development, correct?
I, I don't, I don't know. To be perfectly honest with you, I haven't studied it. You probably know it better than I.
In this board members' opinion, it is definitely not.
So I, I'm not sure whether the standard is only that you have to be consistent in the way that you're describing it, or it has to be a good design and worthy of being approved.
Well, I believe our ARB rules, whether it's similar or dissimilar.
It's based on the neighborhood that the project is going into.
So I.
And in this case, at least in this board members' opinion, that would be very dissimilar.
Right, well, we'll, we'll address this. My understanding is, is that.
We're addressing it right now.
No, no, I'm saying I will get back to you with a more detailed response, but the initial response is, is that when you're talking about similar and dissimilar, you do have to be, to some degree, comparing apples with apples and oranges with oranges. This is the only senior development. So to turn around and say that this senior development should have the same design elements as non-senior developments is perhaps formulating this in a way where you're trying to make apples similar to pomegranates, and they're different. So that's why I'm saying to you that perhaps you may want to not just think about what do homes look like, but making a comparison based on the fact that this is a different type of development.
That's basically what the ARB is, correct?
Perhaps Mr. Barshav and the applicant can submit some information in that regard, taking into account your provisions of the ARB relative to excessive similarity and excessive dissimilarity in your presentation.
I, I have a broader question, is, do you know how many lots are left in the senior housing?
That I do not, you know?
And are we looking to make this, is this looking to become an approved model, or is this looking just for a specific lot this is going, like the lots that are listed here?
So as you can see, when you're driving down this entire area, which is now the, in the middle of, of the development, the senior housing is a lot of small, single houses, one in back of each other, very close, and it's interesting-shaped lots. And this type, what we're trying to do is, is some lots is, if it's, if we're not using the zero lot line, which was approved, I guess because of this issue, maybe they put it in because of that, it's like 11 lots, which cannot be developed anything on this lot, because of the interesting shape. So we look on the subdivision map and the, and the table, and we see that it's a zero lot, they have a part of the approval to make a zero lot line in this area. So we, using this idea of attaching this to, which is going to help to have more landscaping, more outdoor space for the seniors, and the driveway will be just two driveways together, not a lot of driveways. So it's going to be much nicer, but we looking for about 11 lots to do like this.
And the 11 lots, are there plans to keep those as individual lots, or would there be lot mergers that would be done there?
No, individual lots. Every time, this is to stay the, two individual lots, two owners, just to use the zero lot line from the table and make it together. So the style, what we doing with all the ace, is to blend in with the, all the other houses, which is this type. If you feel it's too wide, we can look, maybe to make it a little bit more narrower and deeper. Look on the lots, if it's possible, the most possible, it should not look like so wide. But we, we're going to have to look on all the lots, because we don't want to make too much types. Everything should be blend in, so we have to make like two types fit in all these lots. So we can revisit this to make it a little bit narrower, the entire building.
And then, I guess the next question I have for you, and I guess there's some confusion with the way that, it's maybe the way the drawings came out, but I think one of the documents says there's no basement, but yet if you look at the drawings, it looks like there's a rear, like it, so is there a basement, or is there not a basement?
So it, it's a basement, but in the back, when the slopes goes down, the basement becomes half exposed.
So it becomes a walkout, almost?
And not fully walkout.
This left line is the gray line.
Okay.
The white is the foundation, which is under the ground, and the siding is the top ground. So it's legal a basement. I can't show the dimensions on the next application to show that it's a legal basement. So it's just a wall story and a book and an unfinished plan.
And the, the plan is for the basement just to be unfinished space as well?
Yes. We're just making it for the senior. If they will, in the, in the future, to finish it, they can come back to the building department and fix up the basements. So that's the reason, one of the questions was why we need two doors, is because of the senior, they like to have the back door to the backyard for the grandchildren to play. We, we trying to think of the market, the people to like, because people don't want to have to cut concrete in the future, so we trying to think ahead.
Okay, so that's what you said, this would be the first floor here. This would be the first floor here, and that would be the exit from the first floor out, this here.
This is from the first floor, steps going down, from the deck, steps going down. This is the base, the back entrance from the basement for future.
Okay, and what's the side entrance for? Sorry.
The side entrance for, is supposed for them, if they're going to want to add for the children, for, for the kids to come, for them to make a guest room, in the future.
So in, in, what I'm seeing, so what, from what I'm gathering from what you're saying, they're going to actually have three entrances and exits. The main, the basement, and then a side entry-exit.
Correct.
And that would be across all units? That would be standard between all the units?
It's going to be the standard.
Well, for all, for all the units, all the 11 units would be the same cookie cutter? For the most part?
Yes.
Are there questions or feedback from the board for the applicant right now?
Well, we're going to go through Jim's, right?
Yeah, we're going to go through Jim. While we were talking, I just figured we'd... Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. Under zoning, the applicant proposes a two-family dwelling, also known as a duplex. I think we talked about the duplex enough to leave that where it is, so we won't go back into that. Bulk, the plan lists 30,000 square feet as required minimum lot area, whereas 10,000 square feet is required. The applicant should revise on setbacks. We defer to the building inspector for clarifications on what actually is the front, rear, and side yard setbacks. Coverage, the maximum coverage permitted is 35%. The applicant should confirm compliance with the plan. Under ARB, the applicant proposes, proposals suggest the application before the board is a model for future duplex homes. The colors and materials presented in the application package vary from previously approved material lists for the Woodbury Village. You may wish to consider whether one option for colors and materials for a model home should be considered at this time, which would allow future builders and buyers options. The floor plans show a one-story structure with an unfinished basement having several means of egress. I think we discussed that, so I'll skip over that. The floor plan depicts two-bedroom dwellings. The projected water and sewer demand form lists five bedrooms. The limit dwelling units to, the code limits dwelling units to two bedrooms. The applicant should clarify and revise accordingly. On our records, the approved models for active adult homes range from 1,574 square feet to 2,108 square gross, gross floor area. The applicant's comparison table suggests the building footprint is 2,291 square feet with a gross floor area of 5,179 square feet. The originally approved home should be confirmed with the building department. The applicant provided photographs of the site from the view corridor. The board can decide if it's sufficient evidence that the structure is not visible. You may want to waive or adjustment on the ridge preservation. The code requires earth tone or neutral colors. We recommend you consider the ARB form and the renderings. The code requires the greatest extent possible. Every attempt shall be made to limit the amount of tree removals and cutting. The applicant should demonstrate how this modifies the approved landscaping plans and clearing limits on the plan. And the site plan, water and sewer, the applicant proposes a two-inch copper water service, whereas previously there was a three-quarter inch for each single home. This is subject to review by the Water and Sewer Administrator. The applicant should be required to confirm the details of the originally approved for the utility installation. And lastly, the lighting. The original approval included a streetlight at the end of the T-drive between the two homes. The applicant should discuss if there'll be any substitute for the street lighting. That's it. Sorry.
We're all sitting on the edge of our seats, like, what's that?
You left us with anticipation there. Why a two-inch for a private dwelling? Copper water supply? That seems unusually large for a, what's going to be a single-family. Is that a typo? Maybe you can find out?
I have to find out. Maybe you can have next time to bring the engineer to the meeting.
Yeah, that's just, it is unusual for a private dwelling to have a two-inch. Even with the sprinkler system, it's unusual for a house to have that size water.
Okay.
You don't have to...
Most probably it's a mistake. But I can afford this, all these comments, which is related to the site plan.
Okay.
I will forward to the engineer, and he will come back with, or if he has to fix, or exclamation.
Also, you've been before this board before, maybe to save yourself some heartache and trouble. If you're looking for more than one color variation, if you're going to let your clients pick different colors for the houses or roofs, maybe you want to submit all of those at once? Kind of like say, hey, listen, these are the 11 models we want, and they can have like three or four different colors. This way, if they want to, if it does get approved and they want to have a different color, they're not coming back here to say, you approved this color, we want this color. So, maybe to save yourself a little work there, you may want to do something like that.
Thanks for the advice.
And would you consider having each half of the semi-attached same color or different colors? As long as they're compatible?
Up to the board, if the board liked to see a different type of color. I don't think so. It's nicer when it's one color.
I got a little funky habit.
Yeah, it's just a...
I don't get a say.
...clarify going forward.
I just said, I don't get a say, but I agree. Makes sense.
That total square footage, 5100, is that both units? Is that the, is that the, the square footage? Is that calculating the square footage of the two units together or each individual?
It's...
Each individual unit?
It's, um, each individual unit.
So it would be 10,000, it would be a 10,000 square feet total for the two units?
Very true. So each is 5,000 because it's the, it's, yeah, we have a full basement underneath.
Right, so you have 25, 20, rounding, 25, 25.
The footprint is, the total, what we have here is 4,399.
Okay. Okay.
4,385, 4,49. And for the address 51, we have 4,399. Press...
I don't think you have to do the comparison. I think Tommy was just asking, you're trying to get the idea of the size of the units. And you said there's 11 lots. So if you could, on your submission, just take the tax map and mark the 11 lots where you would be potentially looking to put these, so the board would have an idea of, you know, where they would be. Anything else the board wants to see? No? I missed, no, it's right, Kelly?
I don't have anything else.
No, I think for now, right?
Not for now, no.
One question I have to the board.
If you can make it a little bit smaller. We have looked on the topic, regarding the type of colors. This is, again, it's an old picture. It's like light gray, white, whitish, and black roof. So a little bit more dark on that. Can make it a little bit lighter. See in the comments, it's dissimilar. It's a disfamily colors, just a little bit darker. Can make it a little bit lighter. Shouldn't be...
Well, my advice to you would be, if these 11 lots are close to each, and I got, I don't know what the 11 lots are. But if they're in a close grouping, you know we're going to use the 300-foot radius. So, look at the 300-foot radius around where these are going to go and see what colors those houses are.
Okay.
And then, what you would like to see, right? You know, I don't want to say a wish list, but these are the two choices, these are the three choices.
Okay, makes sense.
It would be a palette of colors.
Yes.
Okay.
Palette, there you go. That's the, the technical term. Very nice. Good save there. And then you said the engineering comments you'll send to your engineer for...
Yes.
Okay, and then, Mr. Barshav, you'll work on the consistency study? Just making sure everybody's got their homework assignments for when we see you again with this one. Anybody have anything else on this?
No.
No? Good, good, good. I looked at Claudia. Claudia Way and Claudia. All right. All right, so we'll go back to First Avenue now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, have a good night.
See you.
Thank you.
Let me close some of my screens.
Hang on, I got to scroll up to find where that one is.
So we are going back to Five First Avenue.
Okay. My name is Shloem Miguel from Hartman Design, regarding, representing the client for Five First Avenue. Five First Avenue was here in front of the board six months ago. I don't remember the date exactly. And we was referred to the zoning board, and we, they granted the variances. And now, we didn't submit a new application, but by himself, they put the old application on, so some data is not updated.
Right, I think, so we're working off this.
The office took the 61522 dramatically. They put it here because the ZBA was, was granted. So we didn't submit a new one, more updated one, because some changes was made while being by the zoning board.
Okay.
So, but one thing, what I want to discuss, the main thing is, regarding the road. We did research about the, because the suitable road, we did research about it and we did a survey. It's a 20-feet right-of-way in the Tyre First Avenue, which now is the road just 12 feet. So by rights, if they want to pay the money to invest, they can widen to 20 feet. But more than 20 feet, it's going into the, all the private properties. So, the question is, if we're going to do a 20-feet road, if this is going to be suitable enough for this application?
So, I think as far as frontage, it has to be served directly by a village, county, or state road. So I don't even, I don't, I, I'm going to wait for Kelly to come back. I, I think, one, we would need an opinion from the building inspector as far as frontage goes. But two, I think you actually do need to be, because we had this, Mr. Hartman had an application right on the...
Corner.
The corner. And the ruling from the building inspector there was because it had a side on Scuttermunk, that it was, it met the code criteria. So because this is not on Scuttermunk, which is the only, that's a county road. I don't think by widening the road, that's going to get you because the village doesn't maintain that road. But Kelly, when she comes back and sits down. No, it's okay. So the applicant is asking, and if you remember, we had the house on the corner of First in Scuttermunk?
Yes.
And Inspector Pennella made the ruling that because it had a side on Scuttermunk, it was served by a public road.
Yes.
So this house is about 20 feet in.
Oh.
So, the, I believe you said the applicant may be potentially willing to widen...
If it's going to help, he's going to do it.
But we still don't have the frontage, right?
It's a 20-feet right-of-way, which has belonged to the village, between the properties, along First Avenue.
So it's supposed to be either located on a public road or a road suitably improved to the satisfaction of the village board? I thought we had this discussion where this portion was, it was not a public road, it was a private road. So then, it needs to be a road suitably improved to the satisfaction of the village board. So that would be something that they would need to ask the village board. To what standard would this be suitably improved? Which it may be widening it, it may be a better base, it may be whatever. They will look for the engineer's input, as well as the fire department, emergency services, to make sure that it's stable. And for that, it may just be, if this is 20 feet further down the road to get to this house, it may be just that 20 feet.
So I would, I would think with this application, not to keep going down the road with this one, is maybe the applicant's best step is to go to the village board and ask them?
I think that would be a big deal for them.
I think that's the best thing to do here, is instead of us continuing with to go through this application. Because if the village board says no, there's no reason to be in, because there's nothing we can do, right?
Correct.
So, I think for you, with this one, put a...
Potentially other in this area. Second Avenue is the same.
Yeah, they're all in the same boat down there.
Yeah.
So I think for you, put an application, I guess it's just a letter?
It would just be a letter to start, yeah. But if he has other clients that are along the road too, they may want to get together to help at least fund whatever improvements the village board may say are necessary.
So, I think with this one, I think that's your next course of action.
Okay.
Go in front of the village board, tell them this is what your applicant's willing to do. They're either going to tell you yes or no. If they tell you yes, we'll come back, we'll move the process here forward. If they tell you no, then we're not wasting any more time with you on this one.
So, I would suggest when you write your letter to the village board, either say, they're going to ask, what is, what does the road consist of now? Like, what's its makeup? And are there any proposed improvements? And if there are proposed improvements, or you have an idea of what you'd like to do, or what your, your client would like to do, I would say include that as well. That way, we have something that we can actually give to the fire department and stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Makes sense on this. You good on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
The one time I...
What's that?
I said the one time I step out.
Yeah. As soon as she starts, I'm like, ah!
Sorry.
All right, so Hartman, ARB, 2728 West End. Review and discuss ARB and Ridge Preservation proposed single-family dwellings on adjacent vacant properties. Said properties located 27 and 29 West End Drive in Highland Hills, in those of Village Woodbury, tax tract section 235, block 1, slot 5 and 8.
Yes. Hi, my name is Shloem Miguel, Hartman Design, regarding 27 and 28 West End.
29.
29. 29.
That's a typo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, just to, the, this application was, is two vacant lots rest from the subdivision, and we want to put here two single-family houses. By the last meeting, was discussed that the sewer should be connected to the sewer, not having a septic. And was a concern about the tree cutting type, and we have staked out the building for the board for review. And now we are back to the board for review. Any additional comments on that?
Do you want to go first?
Yeah. Okay, so I have a couple. So, the applicant did provide a copy of the drainage adjustment that we asked last time. One of the issues that was raised was that there's a sewer main that extends across these lots, and we asked that they be shown on the plan and designed around it so that the, the pipe and the system aren't impacted. So they showed the sewer main on 27 West End, but it doesn't continue onto 29. It kind of just goes to that lot line and stops. So the applicant should explain why it stops, or if it continues, where it continues to. And also, could you show the site plan?
I could.
Thanks. Yeah, there. So it kind of just goes and stops. So the applicant should also discuss whether or not the grading in the back for that would impact, with the, the wall in the house, would impact the sewer line or not. Of the application materials, you have obviously duplicate application materials, one for each one. There was the authorization to inspect for 29 that was missing. We got two for 27. So we just need that one. The, the lot area and the lot width for these are legally pre-existing non-conforming conditions. The building inspector has made that finding. But the applicant still has to show all of the bulk information on the plan. So just the chart isn't good enough. It needs to, it needs to be shown graphically on the plans. I wanted to talk about that while these are very similar, remember when the board's reviewing them, they are two separate applications, so that you may want to consider them separately. And then I know there was some discussion at your last meeting that these are untouched properties. So you were discussing the Environmental Conservation Commission, which is you guys, per chapter 36, and you're charged with reviewing certain applications for the removal of trees. I've provided you with those particular provisions. I didn't know if there was anything that you needed to discuss, but from a practical standpoint, there was one element of section 287-7A4 that should be accomplished during your review at this time, so the applicant doesn't go... be accomplished during your review at this time, so the applicant doesn't go through this, leave, have to come back, leave, have to come back, anything like that. They're just here once. And that is that prior to the issuance of a building permit by the code enforcement officer, so again, this would happen now with you. The commission shall designate on a given lot the trees to be retained by the developer, which designation shall be based on the proposed location of the house, driveway, septic system, and other accessory uses and structures. It being understood that in the area, that in that area, the commission shall not designate any tree for preservation. So based on that, if there's any specific trees on these properties that you are like, do not touch this one. You should let the applicant know that now, instead of, for example, approving an ARB application, but then because it falls under this, they have the approval, but then they have to come back to you for you to designate which trees you want. So. I'll just keep going.
Yeah.
So it is, it is a type two action under secret. You did get your GML response back from the county. It was obviously a local determination, but they did have some advisory comments. Northern long-eared bat. They thought that variances were needed, but as I've already told you, those are not necessary. Those for lot width and lot size. They discourage development on slopes more than fifteen percent due to erosion, and they would like the board to strictly enforce stormwater management protection measures. And I would suggest a potential condition of the tree clearing restriction for the bats. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And I went kinda fast, so if you want me to type that out in an email, let me know.
What?
I said I went kinda fast, so if you want me to type that out in an email and send it to your office, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Well, council stole a lot of my thunder, so a lot of my comments, I'll be abbreviated with ARB. Renderings were provided and elevations for you to consider similarity and dis similarity, criteria of the code. The applicant provided photographs of neighboring homes for you to also consider. The applicant provided a building footprint and gross floor area of the structures in a table compared to neighborhood homes for you to consider the similarity and dis similarity. Based on the information provided, considering building footprint, the proposed homes are eight percent to fifty three percent larger. Considering gross floor area, the proposed homes are twenty six to seventy four percent larger. Ridge preservation, the applicant provided materials to demonstrate the home's visibility from view corridors during lethal conditions. If the home is not visible, we believe you have the authority to waive or modify that part of the code. Trees, I believe council covered all the conditions or comments regarding trees. The code requires earth tone and neutral colors. You previously requested material samples to consider compliance with this requirement of the code. Water and sewer, the sewer, the projected water sewer demand form submitted should be revised to reflect the proposed utility connections, both the size, length, and material. Council covered the easements. Drainage, there's, a copy of drainage easement is shown and was provided to council. The applicant should confirm, there's a, there's a catch basin that is shown with an outlet pipe going on to site of the location of Lot twenty seven. It's not continued to where it goes if it's daylighted, or if there's some sort of path of water that should be shown. Retaining wall, the plan is known, walls will not exceed four feet. You may wish to, the board may wish to include a condition in your action requiring any retaining walls greater than four feet to be designed by a professional engineer. And the tree clearing restrictions to protect the northern long-eared bat, I believe council mentioned. And a public hearing should be scheduled or waived based on, it's permitted by code based on your discretion. That's it.
Thank you. I don't see, with regards to the county's helmet about steep slopes, I don't see a steep slopes. Did I miss it?
Maybe I missed.
Have you been there?
No, I've been there.
I'm looking for the.
I'm looking for the actual contour, with the contours that shows the actual steep slopes.
Oh, oh, I thought you mentioned one of the actual comment that said.
No, 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 no. The applicant, the engineer did do one to show where the house on, fall into the slopes.
The county was probably just looking at it with the topo. I don't.
Yeah.
I just want to ask one, one thing about the tree cutting. It's anything in the code that, that I'm not allowed to cut the trees on the area where the house has to be? If I'm in the setbacks, I need a driveway? What is the, I didn't find anything about to not cut any trees where the house, where I have to minimize the minimal possible to not cut more than is needed for the development. So.
Right, so I think what Kelly's referring to is that there's a, a separate provision that's, it doesn't come up often because there's not a lot of vacant or untouched lands. Let me rephrase that question. Lands that have never been developed before left in Woodbury. So when you have a piece of property that has never had any development on it before, which these two parcels are, there's the Environmental Conservation Commission, which this board, it's the third hat this board wears. So we have to look at that property, because it's not been touched before, and say, and I'm just using an example, maybe there's a three hundred year old red oak smack dab in the middle of your living room. So this board could potentially turn and say, no, that's a specimen tree. We don't want that tree cut down. You're gonna have to rearrange either the location, or the type, or the size of the house to preserve that tree. So that's.
Rearrange, or they can't tell me to not build, because this building also, this land was before untouched land.
The board can't tell you not to build. These are some difficult shaped lots and difficult topographies, so you are gonna be limited in, you know, what you can do with them anyway, but they can say, there's, what the board is supposed to do is it's supposed to take into account what you're proposing, but then what trees are on site. So there may be a, a tree that's not even close to the building, but it's near the property line, and they could say, that one, don't touch that one. And that, you know.
But how was developed, all the undeveloped lots, this lot was also where we sitting now? I didn't, we didn't have this exercise, and all other lots, maybe it's just the first time. And I look at it.
There's been movement on a lot of those other lots, and this honestly is probably one of, maybe the second time this has ever come up since I've been here. So it's usually, it usually doesn't apply. But here it does, but I don't want it to seem to this board or to the applicant like this is going to be a huge heavy lift, just based on the uniqueness of these properties. But the board should, I would say, go out, do a drive-by, you know, and see if there's anything that you deem, you know, maybe even as close to the road saying, that one looks really good, maybe the driveway could curve in if that's need be. But I don't think, it's not as heavy of a lift as it sounds.
Would that apply to the all mine application as well?
To the what application?
All mine.
All mine?
I'd have to look.
Pause that comment. Let's stay, let's, let's stay on this, let's stay, let's stay on this track.
Just wanna be clear, because they're both on a very steep slope, and they both have trees, and we're trying to decide if we're gonna save the trees or.
Well, I think it doesn't have anything to do with it being on a steep slope. I was just raising that for this project, because if you zoom out a little bit, this, these are some pretty uniquely shaped lots that you've got here. So the applicant is really kind of restricted on where a house can be located to comply with the required setbacks and things like that. The other lot is, first of all, not before you right now, but is a little bit different. So.
But it also have to go to the, to review because it was undeveloped lot.
Yes, so they're gonna have to decide certain trees, but they are so far away on that one, as you heard, so.
I know it was a couple, I know it seems like eons ago, but it was, it was still tonight that we talked about that one.
But don't, like I said, for these lots, they are uniquely shaped, and they have a small developable area, so I don't know, I don't know where the trees could be.
Yeah, this is staked, this is staked.
This is staked out, right?
So why don't we go take a look one more time?
Okay.
See, there are any trees.
And if there's not, look, this isn't a requirement that you find trees that you want. If it's scrub brush, and you're like, this is not important to me?
Yeah.
Then it's not important to you, but at least you've gone through this, we can make a finding, and the board can consider that.
It's not like we have redwoods around here.
You don't?
Okay, so we're gonna review DP all the comments what Kelly raised, and then we'll go back, and we'll have to arrange additional site visit.
Well, we'll do that on our own, we don't need you to arrange that.
I understand, yeah. So, and once we do have that.
Yeah, 'cause, well, you can do, you should be able to do, we can do that in conjunction with you, 'cause there's some plan revisions you need to do anyway. So why don't you work on those plan revisions? So by the time you get those back to us, this board, I'll remind the board to make sure we go out there and look. And then we can have that conversation that night.
Okay.
And again, like Kelly said, the board may come back, and it just may be all brush, and they'll be like, it's not even an issue, and we'll just move forward.
Did you wanna talk about scheduling a public hearing, or not yet?
Let's wait till.
Wait till you figure out the sewer.
It's figure out the sewer, and then, I don't know, I don't remember, I have too many projects in my head, I don't remember what the site looks like, so.
Okay. Go check it out, and then determine if you need a public hearing, if you want a public hearing.
Yes. Let's, last but certainly not least, Sixteen Janice. Review and discuss ARB and ridge preservation of a proposed demolition with existing dwelling and reconstruction of an eleven thousand square foot single family dwelling. Said property is located sixteen Janice Drive in Highland Mills, and is known as the Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section two oh four, Block one, Lot eighty nine. Welcome back.
Hi, my name is Shloem Miguel from Hartman Design. I'm here behalf of the applicant for sixteen Janice Drive. So the first thing what I want to ask, to discuss, because this lot is, was subdivided before nineteen ninety, and it was built before. We have the record, it was built nineteen eighty four. I think the subdivision was in the mid seventies. If this application can be waived from the ARB, just have to go through the ridge provocation.
I'm gonna look.
Hold on, Jeopardy music.
No, don't do that.
Did it get kicked for elevation, or did it get kicked for?
I'm not sure.
It's six hundred ninety eight, eight seventy, eight seventy two, eight seventy three?
So it's probably just.
It's for, it's for.
It's just for ridge.
It's for ridge preservation.
Yeah.
So it's half of the review. It's not ARB and ridge pres, it's just for ridge pres.
Ridge pres.
Because of the elevation of the property.
Of the property.
Is that, answer that question?
What?
That answers that question.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So now, we are here to hear any feedback, comments from the board and the professionals. We'll answer on that.
You wanna go ahead, Jim?
Sure.
So the, there is no ARB, then review, so we'll just skip.
It's just gonna be for ridge.
Right, skip.
It's for elevation, so.
Okay, all right, no problem. For ridge preservation, the applicant provided a photo from the Route forty four view corridor, demonstrate the visibility of home. The photo demonstrates the home is not visible during lethal condition. We recommend you consider whether additional information should be provided. The code requires earth tone or neutral colors. We recommend you consider the renderings provided, and if the materials provided meet the intent of the code. The code requires healthy trees to be preserved. Every attempt to be, to every attempt to limit the amount of cutting and removal of trees. The applicant proposal includes a demolition of the existing home and relocation of the, of the home to the northwest. New location appears to contain a healthy tree inventory. The board should consider whether a tree survey should be required. Water and sewer, the projected water and sewer demand form is missing information regarding the proposed sewer connection and the calculations of the average and max daily demand. Water per the plans, the property is served by existing well under the moratorium. The applicant may be required to submit proof of the, of the well. The sewer, the applicant proposes a sewer lateral connection to consolidate sewer area, but the property is outside the sewer area boundary. Accordingly, an out of area sewer agreement is required from the village board. If the exist, the existing home, the, it would appear the existing home is served by a septic tank or septic system. Location of the septic system should be shown on the plans. Retaining wall, elevations of the wall should be shown on the plan. And the board may wish to consider the colors and materials of the wall as part of well we don't run through in the ARB, so skip that. Public hearing, discretion, a public hearing should be scheduled or waived based on the board's findings. Okay.
So just so the board knows, the applicant on this has made an application to the Board of Trustees to be considered for an out of area agreement for sewer. It hasn't been taken up yet by the board, but they have made that application.
Thank you.
I reviewed the plans. What is a Costco closet? This has been driving me nuts. I have no idea.
It's a, it's a self-created name for a type of closet for bulk items when you're buying in Costco. A box of tissues, a box of things, when you're coming.
That would be awesome.
To put in everything there by the garage, when you need some single thing you're coming and bring to the kitchen.
I personally leave mine in the garage, so this closet is brilliant. I was, I was at a loss, and it was driving me nuts.
I was wrong too.
Thank you.
I couldn't figure it out either, so.
One of our engineers in your office got that right, by the way. Anyway, so.
I don't blame you on that one.
Under secret, the applicant should confirm the number of bedrooms proposed. The EAF lists six bedrooms, where the floor plans appear to indicate four bedrooms proposed. And under question fifteen, the site is flagged for potential presence of the northern long-eared bat and timber rattlesnake. The applicant should note the timing restrictions for tree clearing. And regarding the timber rattlesnakes, you should consider the potential for encounters during construction. I think we talked about that earlier today.
The other thing was that the playroom and the study both have closets, which if they have closets, they're considered bedrooms. So we just need to be clear on if it's six bedrooms or four bedrooms, and the plans didn't match up.
Okay, we'll fix that. First of all, regarding the view corridor, I see we have some missing information, so come back to, to make sure, to make clear that it's not seeing, so then it can be waived from the ridge provocation.
So I think.
We'll come back next meeting with, address all the comments of the site plan, all these things, and to make clear about the view corridor, if it's visible or not.
And maybe if, you may wanna come back with an alternative color, because if it is visible from the view corridor, you have white, I think if I looked right, right? Arctic white for the siding, and smoke gray. So neither one of those are naturally occurring colors. So to save you a headache, talk to your applicant.
If it's, if it's visible, to change the, this to more.
Yeah, and you know, the siding may not be visible, or maybe the roof will end up being visible, you know? So just talk with your applicant, and maybe have an alternative for that.
I have here the applicant here.
So what do you, so maybe you can take, when you go home and take out the swatch book of the roofing colors, think of something else that's more naturally occurring. Okay.
It's about if it's visible.
It's, we just gotta see if it's visible. Now, I'm trying to save you from coming back two more times, and you know, have your alternative, this way we can just kinda take care of it. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on the board?
He's gonna have a Costco closet.
I know, that is a. I know, that is awesome. You should patent that, trademark that term, make yourself some money. Hartman Design special, the Costco closet.
Costco.
Yes, that's awesome.
All right, so you, you're good with what you need to do with this one too, right?
Yes, I'm gonna come back.
The board is good too, no other questions or comments here? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for sticking with us tonight.
And you are here every month. Thank you.
Just for the public edification, we do not have a meeting again until May fifteenth is the next meeting of the planning board. So we'll see everybody then, and with no further business. Oh, you were like grabbing that microphone quick, like I forgot something. No further business before the board motion closed.
I was thinking second.
Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.